The hearing of the City of Salem Council and the Planning Board is being held tonight in person in City Council chambers. This is Wednesday, August 20th, 2025 at 8:00 PM. You can get a call this morning with the chapter eighty-eight, eighty-five, five. The Mass, the Massachusetts general laws for the purpose of discussing ordinance, ordinance, man, ordinance, ordinance, zoning, zoning, right, right, size, eighteen, family, five, five. Distorters, owners, your hearings here was on August 6th, twenty-five, at three, at three seventy-seven PM. Absent, absent city, city councilor, councilor, or, 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 councilor, so, council. Council, the president, president, Yuski is presiding. This time, this time I'd like to turn it over to Charita, Charita, for an introduction of the planning, planning board.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, councilor, president.
Again, thirty strategies to help us respond to our housing needs. Other context data, we're a city of about forty-five thousand people, sixty-eight percent of which report commuting to work by car. We know people take other trips, but it's an interesting data point. Roughly fifteen percent commute by transit, walking, or biking. And according to ACS data, which is census data, sixty percent of Salem households report having access to one or fewer cars. When we break that down, that's fifteen percent report having access to no car and forty-five percent that report having access to one vehicle. But again, when we hold those data points in conversation with the requirement of 1.5 parking spaces to one unit of housing, I think we can see that there's a mismatch there. And lastly, in 2022, Alexis Smith of MAPC, who's here with us tonight, conducted interviews with home builders and developers who are active in Salem, who have produced housing here in Salem to get her arms around the real cost of developing housing here in Salem. And that was done as part of our Inclusionary Housing Ordinance that was advanced before this body in 2023. And through those interviews, she heard that it costs $35,000 to produce a space of podium parking, so that's structured parking, and $10,000 to $15,000 to produce a space of surface parking. And so those are 2023 numbers, so they've almost certainly increased. And what we want to note is that each dollar dedicated to parking, and in some cases, parking that ultimately sits empty, is a dollar that's not available to advancing other public goods like housing or green space. So how can we ensure that our local public policies are advancing our housing goals and other priorities? We think that is through parking reform. So to ensure we all have a shared understanding of what parking reform is, like the mayor said, we want to be very clear that parking reform is not, in fact, a ban on housing, a ban on parking, rather. What parking reform is, and this is credited to the Parking Reform Network, is the use of policies and activism to discourage the building of too much parking supply and encourage more equitable, efficient, and sustainable management of the existing parking supply. This can include reductions in current parking minimums, the elimination of parking minimums, and the introduction of what's called parking maximums, which are effectively a parking supply cap or ceiling. Again, parking reform is not a ban. Instead, it creates flexibility so that new projects can provide parking that makes sense to their context, to their intended resident populations, to where they are located within a municipality. So ultimately, it is about flexibility. So this graphic here is also from the Parking Reform Network. And what it demonstrates is that parking reform is enormously popular public policy within the United States. This map shows all of the jurisdictions within the contiguous United States that have advanced some form of parking reform. And so the red dots are indicating areas that have eliminated all parking minimums, and the orange dots show an aspect of parking reform being advanced. So that could be the reduction of minimums, the addition of maximums, or elimination of parking minimums attached to specific uses. It is also a known strategy to support housing development. We know that in the Commonwealth, we're experiencing an affordability crisis, but unfortunately, we're not alone in that. We know that that is a nationwide issue. Many of the dots you see on this map reflect parking reform attached to residential uses or mixed uses because of the growing understanding that parking minimums can hinder housing development and make what is built more expensive. So this includes action that's been taken at the state level in Washington, Colorado, Montana, and New Hampshire. There's all of these states took action to eliminate minimums or to establish a limit on the minimums that municipalities in their state cannot exceed. This means that they cannot locally require more parking than the state established minimum, all in response to understood housing needs. When we look at larger cities that have advanced parking reform, there are many to choose from. Austin, Texas is the largest city in North America to eliminate minimum parking requirements. That was done in 2023 as part of a suite of other pro-housing reforms, and they have seen increased housing supply as a result. Seattle, Washington has removed or reduced parking minimums for all non-hospital uses in transit-rich areas and in their urban core. And they have special allowances for reductions outside of those areas for multifamily housing, recognizing the real need there for that use for flexibility. In Denver, they eliminated all parking minimums in July of 2025. Minneapolis took an incremental approach, starting in 2009, and ultimately eliminated all parking minimums in 2021. And they've seen real gains in housing supply and falling rents as a result. And then we also have smaller cities that we can look to. Longmont, Colorado is a city in the greater Boulder metropolitan area. Its population of about 100,000 people, and as of May 2024, eliminated minimums for all uses. We can look at Buffalo, New York. We can look at Hartford, Connecticut. Both communities, smaller cities, that have also eliminated parking minimums for all uses. And then this map here shows US municipalities with populations similar to the size of Salem that have advanced parking reform. So these are all cities, 50,000 people or fewer, that have advanced parking reform. And we knew, coming out of the Committee of the Whole Meeting that was held in June, that there was a desire, particularly from City Council, to see more examples of peer communities, particularly if we could find them in New England. And so Robin and I were able to connect with staff in many of these communities to hear about their successes related to parking reform. So the red dot just over the New Hampshire border is Seabrook. They eliminated minimums for all uses in 2019. The red dot just next to Attleboro is Central Falls, Rhode Island. They removed minimums for commercial uses back in 2012. And seeing the successes of that, ultimately eliminated all parking minimums in 2022. Those are both communities of roughly 20,000 people, so that's less than half the population of Salem. And they found that they were able to make parking reform work for their communities. As of June 2024, according to the Parking Reform Network, twice as many small towns, which they define as communities of 25,000 people or fewer, have eliminated parking minimums, as have larger American cities. And we see that this demonstrates that the elimination of parking minimums and the flexibility that it provides are functional across municipalities of various sizes, densities, transit contexts. And we'll talk a little bit more about Bridgeport and Hartford, Connecticut, in greater detail. So for those of you who did participate in the Committee of the Whole Meeting, you get a new slide. And what this new slide shows is the advancement of parking reform occurring in municipalities since we met at the end of June 2025. So there is still enormous interest and support for parking reform. And you'll see the bottom here. This is a quote from a city councillor from the community of Bothell, Washington, which is outside of Seattle. And they say, "I will be another voice to supporting the removal of outdated, unscientific, kind of like throwing darts at a dartboard, parking minimums." So we've looked across the United States, and we've now come back to the Commonwealth. So what has, what's been happening related to parking reform here in Massachusetts? At the state level, Governor Healey convened the Unlocking Housing Production Commission, and they were tasked with identifying strategies to support housing production as a key solution to our ongoing livability crisis in Massachusetts. One of the resulting zoning recommendations was the elimination of parking minimums statewide for any residential use, again, recognizing that parking minimums can hinder our housing goals. When we look to municipalities that have successfully advanced parking reform in Massachusetts, there are examples both in the inner core of Boston and also communities that are further afield. Somerville in 2019 eliminated parking minimums in a transit overlay district, and then for all new development in December of 2024, at which point they also introduced parking maximums in select areas. Boston eliminated minimums for affordable housing in 2021. Cambridge eliminated parking minimums in 2022 for residential and commercial citywide. And Everett has not eliminated parking minimums, but has come up with strategies to create additional flexibility for parking requirements in their community. Beyond Boston, the community of Acton eliminated parking minimums for residential and mixed-use developments, and actually instituted parking maximums as part of their MBTA 3A compliance because their residents expressed a desire for more walkable communities. In Lowell, there are no parking minimums for non-residential uses in their downtown mixed-use zone. And then in 2023, they actually made an adjustment to allow housing developments of up to 10 units in that same district with no onsite parking provided. In Framingham, they reduced minimums in their central business district, and they don't require parking for ground-floor residential uses in the same district, recognizing that as supporting that commercial vibrancy. And so for some keen-eyed observers, you might have seen on the previous map that there was an orange dot hovering over Salem. And that is because we actually have advanced parking reform here in Salem. The B5, the Central Business District, requires no onsite parking for commercial uses in the B5. And that is because we think that there is recognition that requiring parking for commercial uses in the downtown core would run contrary to our public policy goals of having an active downtown that supports historic preservation and pedestrian enjoyment. And lastly, when we talk about public sentiment and how do people feel about parking reform, there was a recent poll conducted by Abundant Housing in which 800 Massachusetts voters were asked if they would support shifting the determination of parking from municipalities to landowners and home builders. And what they found was that 71% of respondents said that they would agree, they would strongly or somewhat support such a law. Robin's going to talk a little bit more about what we heard from the Salem community in terms of support for parking reform when we talk about community engagement a little bit later. But we think it's an interesting point to bring to the conversation that there is an understanding and an interest in seeing greater flexibility around parking requirements in the greater public as well. So what are the benefits of parking reform? There's a large body of research that indicates there are many benefits when we reduce or remove parking minimums. These include more housing units, lower housing costs, housing growth with limited congestion and air pollution because it allows for additional car-light or car-free households, related decreased auto dependence, improved walkability, and favorable consideration for some state and federal grants, with many of these grants wanting to support communities that are advancing complete streets or smart-growth priorities. And so we have a couple of key examples to touch on where communities have advanced parking reform and seen those benefits. So in Seattle, which reduced and eliminated parking minimums for multifamily housing in different areas of the city, they did see new housing growth. As you can see in this chart here, over 59% of new housing units in Seattle would have been illegal under the previous code. That means that they wouldn't have met the parking minimum in place prior to reform. And while parking was still built, developers built 40% fewer spaces than the previous minimums would have required. In Buffalo, New York, which eliminated minimums way back in 2017, one of the first to do so, they saw even greater housing supply unlocked. 68% of those new units would not have been possible with the previous parking minimums. So in Minneapolis, they eliminated all off-street parking requirements in 2021 after a series of changes starting in 2009. This ultimately led to a 30% reduction in parking supply as of 2024. And typical rents of studio apartments fell 17% in buildings without parking from their Director of City Planning. No single legislative action did more to contribute to housing creation than the elimination of parking minimums. And the image here is Solstice Northeast. That's a 23 apartment complex in the northwest neighborhood of Minneapolis, which despite being in an area with somewhat limited transit service, offers no on-street parking. And we connected with their operator, who reported that since opening in 2023, they have had no trouble in attracting or retaining tenants. And so here's that information on some New England examples, some New England success stories. So we can look to Hartford, Connecticut. That's a population of 120,000. They just eked out a win over Buffalo to be the first city in the US to fully eliminate parking minimums in 2017. And that was through the adoption of a form-based code. The chart here, pardon me, the... Yeah, what we'll say is there is a table and there's a chart. The chart shows building permits in Hartford over time. And so they advanced that reform in 2017, where you do start to see a slight pickup. And then they reported that during the pandemic, like many of us, there was a real financial challenges, and their housing production diminished. However, since 2022, they have seen significant gains. And Stafford and Hartford credit parking reform is a key contributor to that expanded supply. In Bridgeport, Connecticut, a community of 150,000, they eliminated all minimums in 2021, and in 2024 permitted more housing than the previous eight years combined. And in fact, 2024 was the largest permitting year on record since 1990. And this has been touched on in a few examples, but we do want to make very clear, again, that the elimination of parking minimums is not a prohibition on parking. So what happens to parking supply post-parking reform? What we generally see is that cities where parking minimums were eliminated still see off-street parking provided alongside housing units. And this is because some households, whether by need or desire, will continue to own private vehicles. Understanding this, the real estate development market will continue to produce housing developments with parking. However, the resulting parking supply will be smaller and more closely tied to that market demand. And this is a phenomenon called market-driven parking, instead of producing parking to an arbitrary parking minimum. This has been demonstrated to be true in many municipalities, as we've seen tonight. And it is also able to be seen in this case study from Denver, shown on this slide. So now I'm going to turn it over to Robin to talk about our Perfect Fit Parking Study conducted here in Salem.
Thanks, Elena. All right. So next, we will transition to our local study in Salem. We were lucky to partner with MAPC, which is a regional planning agency working in greater Boston. And one of their goals is investing and expanding active and affordable transportation systems. MAPC has been conducting research on regional parking supply, demand, and utilization within the greater Boston and Massachusetts regions since 2015 through what they call a Perfect Fit Parking Study. Thus far, MAPC has conducted four different phases of Perfect Fit within three different regions. Phase three being in the North Shore, with four properties in Salem being included in that. Overall, throughout all these phases, MAPC found that the top factor to influence parking demand is parking supply. Thus, from MAPC, they say that the more parking that we build, the more parking that we will use, and the more that people will want to drive. They also found that parking is overbuilt and underutilized throughout the greater Boston region. So moving into our Perfect Fit Study in Salem, this map shows in Salem where multifamily housing is an allowed use in the city, as indicated in the colored sections on the map. And in gray are all of the zoning districts where multifamily use is not an allowed use in the city. So our proposed zoning amendment tonight is only applying to the colored sections on the map. These five different zoning districts comprise approximately 12% of Salem's land area, meaning that multifamily housing is only allowed in less than one-fifth of the city. Within these five different zoning districts, there are three different current parking requirements for multifamily, being the minimum of 1.5 is indicated in the lighter teal. The darker teal is the B5, where there's a ratio of 1:1 for existing buildings and 1.5 for new construction. And then for the Bridge Street neck, which is the blue hash section at the top, there's a ratio of 1:1, excuse me. So our project in Salem replicated MAPC's Perfect Fit methodology. This included selecting a dataset of existing multifamily developments within the city based on a variety of locations, sizes, tenure type, and affordability to collect data on what existing parking supply, demand, and utilization or vacancy looks like. The properties are listed in the table below. We disseminated surveys to the property owners of these properties to understand parking and housing that's being currently provided. And we also conducted overnight parking counts at these properties to count the total amount of parking spaces that are being provided and the amount of parking spaces that are being utilized. And with that, I will hand it back to Elena to discuss our findings.
So in Salem, we found that parking is overall overbuilt and underutilized, again, consistent with previous Perfect Fit outings. More specifically, across the properties in the Salem dataset, we found that 1.18 parking spaces were built per unit of housing. And of those built parking spaces, we found 62% were occupied overnight, and 38 were found to be vacant. So developments are building under the 1.5 minimum required through the zoning ordinance and are still seeing a vacancy of almost 40%. Parking demand gets at the appetite for parking of current households at these multifamily developments. And in the Salem set, we found that for every one household, they have an appetite for 0.85 parking spaces. Again, this sits in comparison with the existing minimum requirement of 1.5 parking spaces per unit of housing. So this table here shows those findings fleshed out with properties categorized by affordability and development size. So we see in the aggregate in that top row that 0.85 spaces per unit for parking demand, as well as that 1.18 spaces per unit for parking supply. And we can see that there is some variability in those factors for different types of housing products. However, we all see, we see all of them coming in below the current 1.5 parking space per unit requirement currently in the zoning. And again, the elimination of parking minimums provides flexibility for project proponents to propose parking and other transportation measures that make the most sense for their intended housing product and intended future residents. So like with other outings of Perfect Fit, MAPC took the data that was collected through the Salem dataset and inputted into a statistical model. And this was done to determine what factors are most strongly influencing the parking demand that's observed here in Salem. And what they found was that here in Salem, the parking supply has the strongest singular influence on parking demand. This means that there's a positive correlation between the amount of parking provided and the appetite for parking of households living at multifamily developments. And so as we know that supply influences demand, we can assume that the observed demand is impacted by our existing supply, which we know to be overbuilt. Salem findings also reported that distance to a commuter rail, walkable distance to the commuter rail also influenced parking demand, though to a lesser degree than supply. Again, these findings are consistent with Perfect Fit's other research and lead us to the conclusion that to support housing growth in Salem, while limiting concurrent growth in parking and driving, we need to adjust our current parking minimums for multifamily housing. We'll come back to this later, but I'm going to bring back up Robin, who will share with everyone the public's perception of the project and our findings when we brought it to our community meetings.
Right. In order to ground truth our findings and better understand residents' experiences with parking and housing, our data collection process also included some community engagement events, two open houses, and a presentation at the Point Neighborhood Association. This zoning amendment will also include the typical opportunities for public participation as it proceeds through council. We heard from over 60 total residents, including 45 of them who attended our in-person events. Some pertinent data points to highlight, 53% of open house attendees reported living in multifamily housing. 70% reported having one or no cars. And we like to put this in conversation with Elena's previously reported. 60% citywide reported having one or no cars, per the census data. Over half reported using walking, biking, or scooter as their primary mode of transit within the city. And 100% reported that it takes less than five minutes to move between their parking and their home. Some key themes we heard include concerns about home healthcare workers and visitors, and impacts to street parking, support for parking reform as a means of advancement of other public policy goals, and a desire to see improvements made to multimodal infrastructure. We also heard from residents who are supportive and involved in parking reform already. This includes a resident who spoke on parking reform as a means of historic preservation by prioritizing pedestrian space. And also a personal experience from a resident who moved to Salem with a car and struggled to find parking as they didn't have an off-street spot and didn't use their car that much. So they ended up selling their car after a couple years. This highlights also where there are opportunities to shift our existing parking habits and patterns. And with that, I will hand it back to Elena to conclude our presentation and discuss our proposed ordinance a bit further.
So the main thrust of the ordinance proposal before you all is the elimination of parking minimums for multifamily housing. And why elimination? We feel that it is rooted in the data and in precedent. The Salem data findings show that multifamily housing developments are building off-street parking below the established minimums and still observe vacancy of almost 40%. MAPC's statistical model affirms that supply influences demand. And so eliminating minimum parking requirements will make it easier to accommodate change over time. Although not every Salem neighborhood is currently ready for parking light housing today, more will be in the future. And as we work to expand our transit and pedestrian-friendly infrastructure, and the amount of parking provided falls, as we see in other examples, it's feasible that the demand for parking in new developments will decline as well. As we discussed at greater length earlier in the presentation, jurisdictions across the United States have eliminated residential parking minimums and see positive impacts. Those are realized in additional housing supply, lower housing costs, and a parking supply provided that better matches use patterns. We feel that elimination provides the maximum amount of flexibility, allowing developments to determine parking that adequately meets the needs of their resident populations and makes sense in the individual project context. It also unlocks the greatest supply of housing units. It creates the largest opportunity for expansion of housing options for car-light and car-free households, which means that we can welcome new neighbors to Salem without seeing concurrent growth in traffic and congestion. And additionally, elimination is the most likely path forward to support infill development. So that lower density, sometimes called gentle density residential development that people like and enjoy is often the most impacted by parking minimums, as those parcels that would host them are smaller and more constrained and therefore more impacted by minimum parking requirements. And in addition to the stated housing goals, the elimination of parking minimums for multifamily housing advances multiple other public policy objectives held by the city. It will improve sustainability and resiliency, walkability, and our community vibrancy. So as Robin mentioned earlier, there are three core elements of the Proposed Ordinance Amendment before City Council. We would remove parking minimums for new multifamily developments, so that is buildings with three or more residential units. Through the flexibility provided to multifamily housing projects enabled by the elimination of parking minimums, MAPC found that developments can support a slight increase in affordability required through the city's Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. And this would create that uniform affordability expectation that Robin mentioned earlier of 10% of units. It's 60% AMI for all eligible projects. And that is for all projects receiving site plan review. So that's six units or more. And again, the intent of this project was to unlock additional housing supply. And through this shift, we would also see an increase in our affordable housing supply. And lastly, as an assurance that this change won't negatively impact the broader community, we would ask that all projects receiving site plan review, again, six or more new residential units, would be required to provide a transportation demand management plan that outlines how the development will address the transportation needs of their future residents, including parking. So that concludes our presentation for this evening. What I would mention to you- What I would mention to you all and any interested members of the public is there is a lot of information on Imagine Salem about this project. This slide deck and a recording of this meeting will be posted as soon as possible. And we now turn it back over for questions and discussion with city council and the planning board.
Thank you, Elena, and thank you, Robin, for that presentation. At this time, I'll open up the meeting for our council members to ask any questions or any concerns for our presenters. See you, Elena. Councilor Jozelow.
Thank you, President Prozinski. I just had a couple of questions. When you talk about car ownership, how do you get that data? Is it just through excise tax in Salem?
So the car ownership data that we referenced comes from the American Community Survey, which is the same organization that undertakes the U.S. Census. And what they do is they report out on car ownership and vehicle access per unit of occupied housing. And so that's how we got the information that we shared this evening. When we looked at excise tax reports for the city of Salem through the Massachusetts Vehicle Census, we saw that there are twenty-nine thousand vehicles registered in Salem. And so there is roughly, we, the, the numbers reported through vehicle access with the census data and the Massachusetts Vehicle Census, we find are roughly in keeping with each other. They find that they're mostly consistent. So we feel confident about that distribution and reporting of car ownership from the ACS or American Community Survey.
Do you give a little leeway? Like, there's a lot of cars in Salem that people actually live in Salem, but they're not registered in Salem. Like, they may have another home in another state and they actually, you know, live here. I see a lot of that out-of-state plates, but they're actually parking in Salem. You give any, you know, plus or minus on that?
So that's a great question. The city council, rather following the committee of the whole meeting that was held in June 2025, we did, we did provide a response letter that has questions and answers. And I believe that was provided to city council and for members of the public. I want to note that that's also available on Imagine Salem. But a question similar to this came up at that committee of the whole meeting. And so we looked at and compared the number of vehicles which would relate to the findings produced by the American Community Survey and then the excise tax data, which we're able to see reported through the Mass Vehicle Census. And to your point, there are cars parked in Salem that may not be registered here. And we actually feel like the ACS data is a better indicator of those vehicles because that is completed by the residents themselves. It's a self-reported data collection. And so residents of those occupied housing units are reporting on their own vehicle access, irrespective of whether or not those vehicles are registered here in Salem.
Thank you. Also, you had a picture of the Dolce condos on Canal Street of an empty space. Did you know if the people were away or they just, is the unit empty? Or it seems like you're just, you know, taking pictures of the ones down the point that you took pictures that it was overnight. Did you account for people working the third shift or the second shift? Did you talk to the homeowners there? It seems it's a little vague, some of your data that you collected.
So I think there are about three questions in there. And if it's all right, I'll try to take them separately. No, great, great to have the conversation. So the image of the Salem Dolce condominium, I wouldn't say that's necessarily quantitative data so much as qualitative. But we do think that's interesting. When you look at that image, there's actually quite an accumulation of leaves. And it seems somewhat regular that perhaps people do store their trash in recycling in that space. While we can't say definitively that space is never parked in, it does seem like that parking space has also maybe been adapted to serve other uses of the residents at that property. As part of the data collection attached to this process, all of the properties in the data set were given that survey that Robin referenced, and they reported on their unit occupancy and their understood parking at those sites. So we did have some of that interaction with the individual property owners, which was factored into the larger body of data that was collected as part of this project. And concerning the timing of the counts, again, we replicated MAPC's Perfect Fit methodology here in Salem. And part of that project relied on overnight parking counts. And we can acknowledge that there may be circumstances in which individuals would not be in their units overnight, whether that's for work or some other reason. But however, we do think and MAPC believes that conducting counts at that time will give you the best picture of parking utilization at a site.
Thank you. Just one other, you never, you haven't mentioned any projects in the area that may have not worked out. There's a project in Winthrop called the Somerset. They had... It's a forty-unit building, but they only allowed thirty-four parking spaces. And the residents and the businesses have been, you know, fighting with that because it took over a lot of parking spaces throughout the neighborhood, the overflow. A lot of the businesses have been negatively affected by it. So you only pointed out some in Denver and Michigan and where else, all these other studies you, you know, pointed out. But have you ever in this area looked into any other projects that actually didn't work out for the community? I'm just worried about Lee Fort Terrace. It's a hundred and twenty-unit building, one, two, and three bedroom units, and they've only allowed for eighty parking spaces. Right now, I'm having a lot of issues just with the construction workers packing throughout the neighborhoods. So I think the planning to make it, you know, not poor planning, that we should, you should really wait till one of these projects is underway and see if there's any effects throughout the neighborhoods. There's a lot, there's a school there, very congested during pickup and drop-off times. I'm already seeing a lot of the people packing, you know, throughout the neighborhoods. So I'm just very concerned if you take away all these minimum, you know, minimums, that the neighborhoods are going to be affected by it. So I'm just, I'm hoping that you actually wait and see if there's any negative impacts for a new construction like the Lee Fort Terrace. Thank you.
So I can say we're, I'm, I don't think we're familiar with the Winthrop example that you cite in particular. We'll look into that and we may provide a comment letter following up to questions from this hearing as well for city council to consider. What I will say specifically about Lee Fort Terrace, that is intended to be a significantly affordable project. And if we look at our findings from the MAPC Perfect Fit Study here in Salem, we do see that the demand for parking in mixed affordability and deeply affordable developments is lower. And so that means that those households, whether by desire or economic limitations, may have access to fewer cars. Speaking to your comment about sort of waiting to see what will happen, in the comment letter that was provided following the committee of the whole meeting, we actually were able to collect data at the request of, I believe, Councilor Watsonfeld on projects that had received allowances either through special permits or by seeking variances through the ZBA to provide parking under the established minimum. And several of those projects are in service. And I would say we haven't seen seriously deleterious effects from those properties. So I would reference those examples as situations in which, on a case-by-case basis, a reduction in parking required has been minimally impactful to the surrounding community.
Any further questions from the city council? Councilor Cohen.
Thank you, President. I just have a couple of comments. So I think we've already seen, at least in my ward, two seventy-five Lafayette, which got a variance to the ZBA for one point three units. Two sixty-six Canal Street, which is the Bertini Project, two hundred and fifty units, three hundred and two spaces. Actually, more bicycle parking than units, ten percent EV charging spaces. Those are not mandated, so that comes up to one point two. So those variances were already acquired. And I do want to address existing, the Lighthouse Projects through the CDC and the Point, there's two of them. One on Peabody, one on Levitt, those have already been built and, and have been filled for several years, two buildings. And they applied, I believe, for point seven six parking units per, parking spots per unit. And they also passive house design and they don't have residents on the first floor. So, you know, my, my personal view is that there's a misconception, as the mayor said, that this will eliminate parking. But I was talking to someone yesterday who expressed that concern. And I said, oh, jeez, when you buy your seven hundred thousand dollar condo, I'm pretty sure that the property owner is not going to say, here's your, you know, two-bedroom beautiful condo and there's no parking. I believe every developer is going to propose or develop what they think the need is. And that's what eliminating the parking minimum is. It's allowing the developer to fit the need to the development and not to have it correspond to a mandate that may not actually fit that development. Thank you.
Any further questions? I just have one. Elena and Robin. Was the, the first I have heard from constituents concerned about the overspill. Now, it was mentioned in your, in addressed. So one picture that stood out was the picture from Minneapolis where twenty-four units were built and there was no parking for all those twenty-four units. I'm trying to picture that in Salem, something like that happening, being built in a neighborhood where the spillover would spill over into streets that are already tight for parking because that's the way that Salem is. A lot of Salem is, parking is at, is a luxury. What does the city have available as tools to be able to see that that's mitigated? So that if somebody does want to build something that large, how do you address the concerns of the neighbors who are saying something that big is going up in our neighborhood and we already have tight parking? Where are those people going to park? So does the city have the tools available to tell the developer that can't go up unless you provide?